Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome to the March 10, 2025 meeting of the Rockingham County Planning Board, which I now call to order. At this time, the Chair calls upon Mr. Corey Scott for our invocation.
Let us pray. Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful to gather here in this planning board meeting. We are grateful for the opportunity to serve the community, and we're grateful for the citizens that come and participate with us. We ask Thee, Father, for Thy help in as we consider the cases and the issues before us, that we might have Thy wisdom and the insight and the patience and the concern for citizenry that we need in order to make the right decisions for both the county, for the citizens under the laws of the state of North Carolina. Bless us to be kind, courteous, and that we might have a good meeting that would be uplifting for those who participate. In this, we pray, in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Next on the agenda is adoption of the agenda. Before we adopt the agenda, I've been advised that zoning map amendment case number 2025-03, the applicant has withdrawn his application, but there may be a representative here tonight that wishes to speak to that. Not yet, sir, not yet. Just acknowledge that you're going to speak. Okay, thank you. With that, I'll take a motion for adoption of the agenda. Oh, sorry, one last item. Under new business, or I guess it'd be old business, I have a small update on the North Carolina General Assembly's prohibiting downzoning, which I'd like to share with you, but that can be done at the end of the meeting under old business. And with that, I'll now take a motion for adoption of the agenda.
I'll also point out real quick, I'm so sorry, that the minutes is missing.
We haven't got that far yet.
I was just going to point out, as far as the agenda, though, that there aren't any minutes available, so we might want to remove that from the agenda, and we will probably just get those added to the next.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we adopt the agenda with the removal of approval of minutes and an amending of case number A and adding the general assembly update under old business.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adopt the agenda with the changes as outlined, all in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. There isn't any opposition, so the motion is adopted. Agenda is adopted. The following is for your general information regarding rezoning. Zoning map changes reviewed by the planning board are legislative matters. These map changes are reviewed for reasonableness and consistency with North Carolina General Statute 160D, the county's 2021 Land Use Plan, and the Unified Development Ordinance, among other adopted plans. When making a decision, this board considers recommendation of the planning staff and public comments. When applicable, this board reviews potential land uses requested by the applicant. Planning board decisions are forwarded to the Board of Commissioners as recommendations. The Board of Commissioners will hold a public meeting before making a final decision whether to approve or deny a zoning map change recommended by the planning board. A zoning map change is the first in a series of reviews and approval that move a project forward. The Technical Review Committee reviews the site plans and technical items related but not limited to later development approvals, including transportation concerns, environmental issues, and county services. The TRC is comprised of professional staff and other agency members, such as the North Carolina Department of Transportation, county schools, emergency service, and the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. Our first case is zoning map amendment 2025-03. Sir, you can come forward now. If you would, please state your name and address for the record.
Certainly. My name is Greg Garrett, and I reside at 6420 Hampton Knoll Road, Clemmons, that is 27012. And I'm the owner of Braxton Real Estate and Development, and I respectfully request that this case be withdrawn. We've been doing a lot of work since we originally submitted the petition, and we need public sewer in order to develop this property, and Reedsville would not work with us on getting a sewer unless we would be annexed and go through their zoning process. So, there's no need to take this case any further. We'll have to basically regroup and go back through Reedsville.
Okay. Well, thank you for updating us. We appreciate it.
Yeah, and I'm sorry for the late notice.
Okay. Thank you. Our next case is 2025-04. Mr. Cochran, good to have you back.
Hello. I hope you're all doing all right, and good evening to those in the audience. It's really nice to be visiting, to say hey to you guys. I'm going to move things around just a little bit. Here we go. I'm quite familiar with case 202504. It's a request to rezone a property from residential agricultural to residential mixed. For the record, the tax band is 797803437687. It's located on NC Highway 87, not too far from Eden, just a bit of a ways outside of their ETJ. Adam has put together a sending map. Yay, good for you, you got that in the packet today. There's a few things in your printed packet that weren't quite yet ready for any email version, so just so you know that those are in there. The zoning map indicating that currently it's owned RA, there is adjacent RP, there's some highway commercial right at the intersection of Ashley and NC 87, well, Ashley where it turns into Riverside. And just north of there, there's some community shopping. That's an old zoning district that we no longer have in that ordinance. It's akin to something like a low-impact neighborhood commercial, so just to give it a modern reference. Here's just an aerial shot, undeveloped at this point. Property measures about 4.81 acres. The applicant, I don't believe, is here tonight, but the request to rezone from RA to RM is definitely generally supported by the land use plan. The parcel is located in the G1 transect, according to the Rockingham County Comprehensive Plan, the plan that suggests specifically that in the G1 transect, general zoning should be agricultural, although other types of planned residential development and residential zoning might be considered appropriate, including residential mixed. The principal reason for anyone, really, to want to rezone to residential mixed would be the availability of multiple housing types. In the residential mixed district, single-family detached is allowed, two-family detached is allowed, as are three- and four-family detached. True multifamily apartment-style homes are not allowed in residential mixed. So it would allow, let's say if this parcel were to gain sewer, it would allow much higher density than it would with purely septic. I do believe Dan River Water is available here, and I'm 99% sure that Eden Sewer is either here or is coming. So with that, both of those things also support the idea of rezoning to residential mixed at what we call a rural crossroads here that's been identified in the land use plan. The applicant, the owner, is James Lemons, and I will point out that the way the zoning districts here work, to your comment, Paul, rezoning from, in one way, rezoning from residential agricultural to residential mixed is a downzoning. The one way that it is is there are fewer uses allowed in residential mixed than in residential agricultural. A different perspective is that, not super-intensive, but the characteristics of uses in residential mixed is more substantive than those in the residential agricultural district. And these are things that are being debated as we speak about this downzoning statute and what might become of it. Overall, technically, it is a downzoning. The owner has requested it and signed, so that's all good. There's a single owner, and that's all covered. I just wanted to point that out in the light of recent legislation. Your use lists, I believe Adam got those ready for you in your printed packet, but I jumped too far ahead. I was ready for my next one. Overall, this rezoning request fits the area. Staff feels that it is reasonable and consistent, and is recommending approval. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Is there any questions for Mr. Cochran? Lynn, what are you talking about here, multifamily use? That could be townhomes or condominiums.
It could be, in RM, you could do townhomes, you could do two-family condos, three-family, even up to four-family, quadruplex. The townhomes is the most, from the history of what I know in residential mixed in Rockingham County, there has been more and more discussion of the idea of townhomes, and residential mixed allows for townhomes. And I believe the developer, we spoke before he actually applied, and asked me specifically about townhomes, among other types of homes, and what will be allowed, and that's why I explained to him how RM might work.
Okay. And my last question is, do you have any idea how long it's going to be before the public sewer is run?
I do not know exactly when that might be coming. And I don't know if someone's here to speak as an owner. I don't have access to Eden sewer data, of course. It may be, I think, I want to say that the owner told me that it's there, it's right there now, and that he might have to add on some to bring it over to the property, but it's pretty much ready to tap into, and then Dan River Water is there now also.
I guess I could always check with Ronnie Tate.
Oh, yeah, you can check with Ronnie. And Kelly Stoltz is the planning director for Eden. Give her a call. I could have done that, I didn't think about it. But, yeah, according to the owner, there is, there's water and sewer capacity there, which supports the RM.
So if townhomes, if that's sort of where you think this is going, how many can be built on that piece of property?
Well, mathematically, with water and sewer in residential mixed, you can have six dwelling units per acre. On the ground, in the real world, that never happens. Room has to be made for roadways, for open space, for if there's going to be a little pocket park, and several other things will inhibit the space to be completely developed.
So mathematically, it's 24, we're looking for something less than 24?
Pretty much, yeah.
Yeah, did I do my math correctly? Yep, okay.
If you've got 4.8 acres, well, let's just say there's five. If there were five acres, that would be 30 dwelling units. For four acres, you're right, that would be 24 dwelling units. So somewhere between 24 and 30 would be the maximum number mathematically, but it's not likely. It's probably closer to 16 or 18. That's just conjecture, but...
Just general topography may limit the number that can be put in.
Because it's a little hilly.
It's hilly, it's got some slopes.
Cotton fields expensive.
It is.
So if it's, say duplexes, we're not looking at in more than, what, nine maybe? Nine?
If you were to do two-family dwellings, yeah, a sort of reasonable semi-educated guess would be about 18, yeah.
And the reason I ask this, this tends to be, this looks to be the trend in Rockingham County, the duplexes.
It is.
Yep, the duplex townhomes. Yeah.
Economically, we're seeing this in Lewisville, too. Economically, two-family dwellings are making a lot of sense. And when it comes to dealing with the current statewide and regional housing crisis, you know, these are homes that are going to be sort of at an entry-to-mid-level point. Not that that's a consideration that you can, you know, take into account when you're thinking about a rezoning, but you can take into account that this is a way to help address the housing crisis.
And I'm sort of comparing it to Harrington Crossroads, just down the road from it.
Yep, nearby.
So, Paul, how does this fit in, then, to this legislation? If Lynn says this is a down?
Yeah, well, I guess I'll have to speak out of turn of the agenda here a little bit, but the backlash from the legislature denying a local government authority from doing any downzone at all has been tremendous.
Significant.
There's got to be at least 30 bills.
We have 30 today, yeah.
Through the General Assembly right now to repeal that law that denies downzoning.
Okay. Right now, it's not an issue, it's out there, but it's not an issue in this consideration. Thank you.
Exactly.
Language essentially requires that formerly, a local government could initiate a downzoning itself. The legislation was changed late last year, it's a little bit retroactive, so that any downzoning requires approval from any and all landowners. At the same time, there's some non-conforming stuff that doesn't really apply to this situation. The key point that applies to this one is, did the owner request it, apply to it, and agree to it? And that's yes.
The number of counties that are piling on in opposition to the legislation or session law that prohibits downzoning, it's growing exponentially every day.
It is. I think it's probably up to...
More and more counties keep piling on.
Probably up to that. Of all North Carolina counties, including multiple municipalities, have now said, "We want to repeal this for our county, or our city, or our area." Yeah.
Okay.
We'll see.
Thank you, Lynn.
Sure. Any other questions?
No, I think we're good. We have one speaker, Donnie Sears. Is that you, sir?
Yep, Donnie Sears is my name.
If you would, for the record, please state your name and address.
Donnie Sears, address is 11168 NC 87 South, Eden.
Thank you. And what is it you'd like us to know?
All right, well, I live across the street, across the road from this property that's, you know, we're looking at rezoning, and I personally don't see a reason to rezone, you know? If you want to put a house there, that's fine, but, you know, we live in a quiet neighborhood, kids, grandkids, all up and down the street. I own the property across the street, I'm looking to buy the old American store. Aside that, Bill Wright's cabinet shop was right down there, right below that, I mean, you know, you're looking at the old Hilltop Store up there. And as far as referencing the Harrington Corner, you know, those properties are $300,000-plus, you know, for each individual townhouse or condo. My house is, right now, valued at $400,000, my property. I just don't want to see any low-income property or multi-housing going on right there because of, you know, we've been there for years and happy. I just hate to see things change in a way that's going to introduce situations that we don't want to see there, you know? I just don't want to see townhouses, or, you know, and I wouldn't mind Harrington Corner, you know, something like that, something nice, laid out, you know, higher-end houses, but why, you know, and why couldn't you go in there and just build a house, build two houses, build three houses? You know, right before that, right there on Yount Road, you know, you're looking at, right now, they're looking at like six to eight houses.
Seven.
Seven, excuse me, you know, $300,000-plus each one, you know? That's not a significant change in the neighborhood, other than an upgrade from what I see. I mean, my problem is changing the zoning from what it is to something that could possibly get into a whole lot worse. I just don't want to see that happen. Like I said, I live across the road, you know, I don't want my property values dropping, you know, because, yeah, the sewer line is right there, you know, actually on my side of the road, you know, right there, ready for taps, you know, that's not an issue either, but I just don't want to see it happen. And other people down the street, you know, from me, you know, they expect me to come in and talk, but they all feel the same. We don't want it. We don't see a reason for the change, you know? I'm not, I don't have any problem with expanding, you know? I don't, but, you know, it needs to be done the right way, you know, especially in an area like where we live. You know, like I said, we got lots of kids, we got grandkids, people down the street, grandkids, kids everywhere, you know, and, you know, we just don't want to see a big change.
How long have you lived at the property, your property?
I moved there in 1990, so...
Wow.
Yeah.
Are there any questions for Mr. Sears? Okay, sir, thank you.
All right, thank you.
As we begin the discussion of this case, I have to tell you, I live in a condominium right here in Eden. It's located over near the Oaks. And I'm, as chairman of this board, I'm also a member of the TRC, the Technical Review Committee. And there's been at least three applications or site drawings that have been approved recently, I say recently, within the last 12 to 18 months, that include townhomes, most of which are going to be located up along the 220 corridor. And from what I gather in talking to the builders and the rest of the people on the TRC, the average price on the low end of those, these condos, is $350,000. I mean, they're, I don't think you'd have any worry with the type of building that's going to go in there, because they're all like that, they all seem to be. And one of the reasons that the price of these condos is driven up is the way they have to be built, the safety requirements, the firewalls in between all the units, and, you know, you're talking extraordinary construction costs, not just building a house. You wouldn't need firewalls between the rooms in your house if you were going to build a house, but in a townhome, you do. Every unit's got to be built like a separate house, with firewall divisions in between. You've got twice the amount, or three or four times, depending on the number of units per condo or townhouse, of all the underground piping, the utilities, I mean, that's, it's really expensive to do it.
Paul, can I piggyback on that? I actually own a duplex townhome. I don't live in it, but I own it. I probably will live in it at some point in time. And the demographics of Rockingham County are changing. More and more people are moving to Rockingham County from other places, and they tend to be a little older, they tend to be retired, and they are looking for, they like the proximity to the urban area, but they also want to live in a smaller place, or in a place with a smaller-town vibe to it. And this is the kind of housing that they are looking for, and most of them are retired professionals. So this, as Rockingham County becomes the bedroom community, or the exurb of Greensboro, and that's exactly what it's, that's what's happening, this type of housing is, you're going to see more and more of this. And I know what, I know the value of my townhome has risen incredibly just over the past few years because of what it is, not because necessarily of where it sits. It sits inside the city limits of Eden, and what was a $40,000 unit at sales is now $130,000, which is a pretty significant increase in value. And there are always, most of these come with homeowners' associations where things are kept up, and you have to maintain, even if it's rented, you have to maintain it to a certain standard. So I think this is, while this looks like it's down, it's really not.
It's really not.
Yeah.
So when we're talking, when the discussion lately about downzoning from the school of government and from planners across the state, I posted something on the list today asking questions about it. There are more questions than answers than there are with the downzoning rule, because we don't know if the downzoning intends to be, okay, just the number of uses, or if it's the characteristics of the uses. We don't know if that rule applies, if someone is adopting a whole new UDO. Lots and lots of questions. So I did want to present that one perspective, that if you're looking at it based on sheer numbers, it's technically, quote-unquote, a downzoning, but when you look at the types of uses allowed in RM, they're more, they're denser, they're more impactful, so in that way, they're not.
Well, and that was going to be my next question. When you compare RA to this rezoning, there are so many more varied uses under RA, like you can put a pig farm in there under RA.
You could, yeah. RA has historically been and remains a zoning category in Rockingham County that allows a lot of things.
Yeah.
Because it was meant to cover a broad array of historical agricultural uses, low-density residential, and even, you know, remember, we used to do special-use permits for rural family occupations that were kind of intensive sometimes, but it was RA, so it fit. So the dynamics and the way they're shifting, I believe we're going to see more and more of these requirements.
This seems like a bit more of a safeguard for the neighborhood than RA. Like I said, you can put a pig farm in here. Nobody wants a pig farm across the street from them, but...
No, it has to be approved.
Actually, it wouldn't be required to be approved, actually.
Well, I've lived out my life, I've never heard anybody even breathe pig farm.
But you can't, under the zoning, you can.
We know, we know what we're talking about here. And we know, I mean, I've been in construction my whole life, I'm a heating and air contractor, I understand construction, I understand construction of buildings, I understand cost. I know the difference between sitting here and talking about it, and when it's there, it's not, two different things, when it's happening. I'm just trying to say that I don't want to live somewhere where people are moving in and out constantly, or, you know, we can call it $300,000 for a townhouse, you know? Anything can happen, you know?
Well, I...
It can be a $300,000 townhouse and still low-income residents, you know?
Yeah. The thing that's hard not to do is give in to speculation, and to Julie's point, I've got to tell you, my condominium community is small, it's only got 20 units. There isn't a person in there that's not retired. That's who's buying these places, retired professionals. We've got bankers, we've got scientists and engineers that live in my community, and that's what they want. They want a little place to get away and...
You know what? You would hear no argument out of me whatsoever if I knew that something like that was going to happen.
Unfortunately...
If it was going to wind up being like Harrington Corner, I know lots of people that live there, you know? I know what kind of neighborhood that is. I know what kind of neighborhood that is.
Was there any reason--
I mean, I live there.
Is there any reason to doubt that yours won't be the same?
I have no idea, I don't know the--
Well, we can't speculate that it won't be.
Yeah.
Or that there won't be a pig farm. Yeah.
Wow. Any other comments or discussion? Bernie, anything? Glenn?
Yes, sir.
How are you doing tonight?
Good, yes.
Well, on that, I'll consider a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve, oh wait, wrong one. Well, if I can find it.
That's the one that the bagger backed.
Okay, here we go. Mr. Chair, I recommend, I make a motion to recommend the approval of this request based on the consistency and reasonableness determination statements that are included in the Planning Board Agenda Packet and as may be amended by the rezoning process.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the application. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. Vote is five to one in favor of approval. Now, sir, understand that approval by this board only serves as a recommendation to the commissioners. You can, you're free to voice your concerns at the next commissioners' meeting when, or in 30 days, when the commissioners will give the final vote on this. It's up to them. The next item on the agenda is approval of a text amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance to modify the dimensional standards for non-residential zoning districts.
Yeah, that was-- 25, oh, sometimes I'm still in 2024. I apologize, I have to catch myself and say 2025. I was contacted by the county attorney. If you reme, I hope I'm recalling this correctly, but if you remember when we did the comprehensive update to the UDO, a zero lot line setback was created for highway commercial, general, excuse me, general industrial, heavy industrial, as long as those abutted each other, there was, and the thinking, I believe, was that existing businesses and new businesses where there might be different zoning districts, as they expanded, they could go up to and over the lot line, to make expansion of those a bit easier, I think was the thinking at the time. Since then, having had several situations come up, the county attorney wrote me and asked my thoughts about it, and thought about the number that we might create. Right now, again, we have a zero lot line in highway commercial, light industrial, heavy industrial, and the office institutional districts, unless they abut a residential district. They do have setbacks for those, but if these abut each other, there are currently zero setbacks. In the current UDO, where non-residentially zoned properties abut residentially zoned properties, there's either a 30 or a 50-foot minimum setback, depending on the intensity of the use. One of the key factors in thinking about this setback is that the zoning ordinance requires a 15-foot wide landscape buffer at a minimum for all non-residentially zoned parcels that are developed. Given that, there is a de facto 15-foot setback line already. This goes to the question of downzoning or not downzoning, because let's say we're taking, we've got an acre lot, and there never has been a setback, minimum setback line, but now we're going to institute one, that's taking away some space. So one could argue that that's a decrease in density, a sort of a kind of downzoning. But in reality, the 15-foot landscape buffer requirement already has, it's just going to end up with a minimum 15-line setback. So with the discussions that I had with the county attorney and others, as you see in red, what we ended up recommending, sort of across the board, for any non-residential district abutting another non-residential district as a setback of, minimum setback of 15 feet, and it's side and rear. Front setbacks are a little bit different, some front setbacks vary between 30 and 50 feet. Additionally, this line, this also, this is another principal consideration that we had. In North Carolina, Fire Code requires a minimum of 15 feet separation for industrial structures without any other sort of extra fire protections. If they're within 10 feet of each other, you can have them, but you've got to put some extra things in place, but they can't be any closer than 10 feet per the Fire Code. 15 lines up a little bit better because it keeps it cleaner. So that's where all this information came from. And with that, oh, I'll just show you what the table will look like. I just took a little snippet out of the dimensional standards table that shows basically what this change would look like, actually in the UDO. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
That's me, yeah.
No questions, I guess we're good. Thank you, Lynn.
All right, hold me out, I have a question here. Lynn?
Yeah.
Uh, setbacks are required to be, it says landscaped setbacks.
Mm-hmm.
What does that mean?
The, yeah, sure, I'll explain a little bit.
Are there some specific guidelines for what constitutes landscaped?
Yes. The UDO says that any non-residentially zoned property has to have a 15-foot wide landscape buffer or screening around it. It is defined in the UDO as primarily evergreens. You have some minimum height at installation requirements, you've got a minimum degree of screening, which it's to complete, excuse me, to basically have a completely opaque surrounding, based on these plantings. And the 15-foot wide is, let's say I'm standing facing the rear property line, from the rear property line, 15 feet towards me is where the landscape buffer can be placed, and it would be the same on the sides. There's also a requirement, it's a parcel perimeter buffer, it has to go all the way around. There's some exceptions for driveway access and things like that.
And that, that buffer, that evergreen buffer, you said?
Mm-hmm.
Is going to be commensurate with the fire protection standards that are also in place?
This will line it up. It will.
Okay.
Yeah.
Wouldn't work in California, I don't think.
Might be a little different in California, yeah. You wanted to do some fireproofing, that might be a little bit of a different story.
Any other questions for Lynn?
Thank you, sir. We need a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I make a motion to approve this text amendment based on the consistency determination statements that are included in the Board Agenda Packet as may be amended.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the text amendment to the UDO. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. There's no opposition, so we are going to approve this request. Now, under Old Business, I was going to bring you up to date on--
Oh, before you do that, under New Business, can we introduce the new planner? For the record.
I'm sorry. Oh, for the record--
Yes.
We want to recognize Adam Barr, our new planner.
If you'd like, I'll go ahead and give him a little intro, he deserves--
Oh, yes, I do like to do the honors. And Mr. Ben Curry.
Yeah, Mr. Adam Barr is now the senior planner, took my role. He and I worked together at Lewisville for about six to seven months before he came here. He's an excellent planner, he knows his stuff, I think he's going to be a really good addition to Rockingham County. And don't be afraid to throw some work on him, that's okay. And if it's, if you would, I think maybe just say, "Hey," and say your name, because for me, that helped stick when I was like, "Okay, who was that planning board member that said what that night?" Yeah, do a little roll call, might be helpful for him.
Or just hold up our signs.
There you go. Hold every sign, say your name. You're good. Thank y'all.
Lynn, Mr. Chairman, I was just going to add just a little bit of just history for me. I graduated from UNCG with a degree in geography with a concentration in urban or regional planning. I interned for about six to nine months with the City of Winston, doing some historic preservation work, and then spent about three years with Davie County. Originally as a planner, became planner two for a while, and also spent some time as interim director there, and then spent two and a half years at the town of Lewisville. And like Glenn mentioned, about the six or seven months towards then, got to work with him as my planning director, before finally coming here and taking his old job. So, yeah, but I had commissioners not too long ago, and bragged on the staff here, everybody in the department so far has given me not only just an incredibly warm welcome, but also just been a tremendous help, trying to help me get, you know, my feet wet and hit the ground running. So, and kind of lastly, I just want to, if y'all haven't already known, Ben Curry, y'all probably seen him at quite a bit of the meetings, he is currently our acting director, so.
Yeah, welcome. I didn't get a chance to talk to you guys before, was meeting with everyone out front. I am the interim community development director, and some of you probably didn't even recognize me since I went in uniform or with a hat on. That's happened a lot the past two weeks. But I look forward to working with everyone for the foreseeable future. And feel free to reach out with me with any questions. It was my intention to give everyone a call last week, but we have been swamped, and very short-staffed right now. Looking to fix that, though.
I have to admit, I'm one of the ones Ben's referring to that didn't recognize a body in a uniform. At the last TRB meeting, I couldn't figure out who he was.
Seen the gun or something.
Yeah, absolutely. That's been the, the popular opinion around the governmental side in the past two weeks, so. Kind of used to it now. Thank y'all.
I have both of you.
And as far as the current legislation mandating a cessation of downzoning, I pretty much said earlier in the meeting what it's all about, the counties are not in favor of it. It's a useful tool, they feel like is being taken away, and opposition is growing every day. Bill after bill is being piled on to repeal it. So we'll keep you updated as best we can. If you wish, you may subscribe for free to the UNC School of Government. There's a web blog called Coates, C-O-A-T-E-S, Coates Cannons, and they publish article upon article about the status of various pieces of legislation that are making their way through the General Assembly, but right now, this is one of their very hot topics, and you'll see a lot written about it.
I'll echo that, Paul, that Coates Cannons is, especially for planning board members, is an excellent resource. There's a history of many types of articles and keeps you up to date on current stuff.
The two principals in the zoning, planning, and land use law section at the School of Government are Adam Lovelady and Jim Joyce, and they're both just crackerjacks at this stuff. They know the ins and outs, they know how to handle all the speculation about it, and they're both attorneys, and they've been at this a while, they're not young kids, a lot of experience. That said, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made and--
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor? Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much for coming.